Would please stand for the prayer. God our Father, we are all your servants. We trust in your mercy and love. We trust also in your guidance. Direct the meetings of this council of North College Hill to make good decisions for all the people who live in our city. Give all the members of this council wisdom and insight to know what is best for our city. Help us to be fair and just in all our decisions. Bless us all to do the very best we can with your help and guidance. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Call the meeting order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Financial disclosure time.
Ms. DeWolff, call the roll, please.
Ms. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Hedger.
Here.
Ms. Underwood.
Here.
Mr. Milonovak.
Here.
Ms. Zorb.
Here.
Ms. Hartman.
Here.
Mr. O'Shea.
Here.
You should have before you copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Does anyone have any corrections or amendments you'd like to request?
I do.
Oh, boy.
Mr. Mosby. I see that first reading of the collective bargaining agreement. Is this, this is the part-time police collective bargaining agreement? Have we, I mean, we haven't discussed this in executive session or anything yet, have we?
No, we have not.
I mean, I would probably move that we add a moment for executive session to, to discuss this contract into the agenda. Maybe.
Mr. Milonovak, was that, was that an actual motion?
Well, I mean, it's.
Or shall we discuss?
I mean, it's, I mean, we can discuss. I mean, I would just prefer to put it in the actual agenda if we know we want to do it now, and then we can motion later. I mean, we can either do it now or after the meeting minutes. We could stick it anywhere in this agenda.
I had, after reviewing the agenda earlier and looking at the legislation on the list, I had some concerns about that particular piece of legislation that I was just going to bring up during that legislation. I don't really have a problem having the first reading tonight, but there are definitely some other issues, whether we want to move into executive session tonight at some point or have a special meeting and move into executive session or take the, take the next two weeks for each member of council to review the contract if they haven't already and then plan on executive session at the next council meeting. Those were just some concerns and thoughts that I had. So, anyone else on council want to?
Mr. President.
Who was that?
Me, this one.
Ms. Zorb.
I will admit that I have not reviewed it. So, for me to go into executive session, I would just, I would not be able to participate lively.
One oh.
I admit that.
Maybe we can just do it next time.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hedger.
I'm not sure if I have a copy of the FOP contract.
I believe it was sent via email from clerk. It's probably been maybe two weeks even or so. So, it sounds like it may make more sense. Again, I'm not opposed to leaving the first reading and, which of course gives opportunity to discuss that particular piece of legislation further if need be, but then maybe setting on the agenda for the next council meeting, making sure we set aside executive session probably toward the end.
Mr. President.
Mr. Milonovak.
I, I'm fine with doing a next meeting if everybody just wants to review it. I might just, yeah, I don't really, that's fine with me. If we just want to, I don't know, maybe today, like during New Business Week, a motion to have it added to the agenda next meeting.
Any other discussion as it relates to tonight's agenda? Can we have a motion to adopt?
Mr. President.
Ms. Zorb.
I'll make a motion to adopt, adopt the agenda.
Mr. President.
Ms. Underwood.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion to adopt the, tonight's agenda as presented by Ms. Zorb and a second by Ms. Underwood. Any additional discussion? Call the roll.
Ms. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hedger.
Yes.
Ms. Underwood.
Yes.
Mr. Milonovak.
Yes.
Ms. Zorb.
Yes.
Ms. Hartman.
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We should have a copy of the minutes from the council meeting February of 18, February 18 of 2020. Are there any discussion or amendments or considerations? Ms. DeWolff, is there a copy in the mailboxes?
Yes.
Would you mind getting mine for me, please? I apologize.
Not at all.
Here, he can have mine, I'm good.
It's odd.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hearing no other concerns about the minutes, I had noted, and particularly under rules in public policy, Ms. DeWolff.
Yes.
You stated that Mr. Milonovak reported on the rules in public policy meeting and, that was me.
Oh, you look so much alike. I'll make that correction.
Anything else on the minutes? Can I have a motion to adopt if we're all ready?
Mr. President.
Ms. Bailey.
I'll make a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from Monday, February 18.
Mr. President.
Ms. Zorb.
I'll second that as amended.
As amended.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Bailey and a second from Ms. Zorb to adopt the meeting minutes from February 18, 2020 as amended. Any additional discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Hedger.
Yes.
Ms. Underwood.
Yes.
Mr. Milonovak.
Yes.
Ms. Zorb.
Yes.
Ms. Hartman.
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Ms. DeWolff, has there been any communications?
Yes, sir. In your packets tonight, you would have received information about the Ohio Ethics Commission, the financial disclosure. So, if you'll read that, everyone who served in 2019 needs to fill this out. I have reached out to other council persons who are no longer here, and I called Board of Elections to find out what happens if I can't get a hold of these folks, and they said, well, you tried. So, that would be their job then, them or Columbus, to seek them out. We have another bill from the Walter Drain Company, and we have our newest and latest copy of Cities and Villages magazine. That's all.
Ms. DeWolff.
Yep.
You said we have a bill from the Walter H. Drain Company. Is that, I know it looks like our information is now published by the American Legal Publishing Company. Have you seen anything from there?
No, I haven't. We should expect the bill from them, is that what you're saying?
I don't know, maybe, maybe Drain subcontract to them or something, I'm not sure.
Mr. President.
Ms. Bailey.
I do, I do believe it all got, like, they moved every city to American Legal Publishing. I'm pretty sure that's what happened, that Walter Drain moved all of it over. So, I think that they're still the same parent company. I think, pretty sure. But I can look at my old and tell y'all, like.
It's just a concern for a little bit later, I have some, some additional discussion, which is related to that, so. Any other communications?
No.
All right, thank you. Committee reports, budget and finance.
We have not met since our last meeting, except for to committee of the whole, do, well, never mind that, Mr. President, so. We have discussed the budget. I would assume that we're probably going to discuss more of the budget in our next finance meeting, which will be next Monday at 7:30 PM.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Bailey? All right, city and community development and recreation.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have not met since our last meeting. Our next meeting is the next Monday at 6:30.
Thank you. Public safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our meeting was called to order at 7:32 PM. We did invite Chief Fellows, who is the fire chief, to attend the meeting. Unfortunately, he was unable to attend due to illness. We planned to invite him to our meeting, which is this month. We also invited Chief Schran to attend the meeting, and he presented a PowerPoint to us to address the two bars on Savannah. There was a lot of discussion about the bars, and basically what he explained to us was that, you know, what he felt, some, some of the zoning issues that could be changed with regard to the bars. Also, they talked about how they had a meeting with the community where they invited just the neighbors of the bars to the meeting, as well as the bar owners, and they felt that that was a really good way to address a lot of the issues with the bars, and they proposed that we do the same thing again to, to try to address any continuing issues. We asked him about the police officer who is kind of parked at the bar during the evenings sometimes, and Chief Schran explained that one of the bars actually pays for a detail officer, as well as the car, to be present in the evenings without any input from the other bar. So, he just went on to say that that bar is really bending over backwards to try to be a good neighbor, to try to minimize any issues, and he says it's really difficult to know when they get, receive calls just to the street, instead of just to any particular bar, which bar to attribute that issue to. He just doesn't believe that it's, he believes that it's really one bar instead of the other, but unfortunately, because they're called to the street, it's really difficult to kind of pinpoint where the issue came from. Let's see, what else? There was, it was actually a really good, a really good discussion. Mr. Mosby was present, and he actually discussed some other ideas that we could probably, you know, that we could probably do to address issues with those establishments, including maybe creating a district to house those kinds of businesses. And I think that where we ended it was Lieutenant Petrelli was also present, I think that's his name.
Petraselli.
Petraselli. He was present, and I think where we ended things was that he intends to schedule another community meeting and where we would also attend to address issues with those bars to see if we could resolve those issues or what, what kind of things we can do to resolve the issues with the bars. That was actually the majority of the meeting. That was the only thing, you know, the primary of, primarily all we discussed. He also mentioned that he couldn't really provide us with monthly reports as to where all the police runs are going because the software that houses that information crashed, and the company is no longer going to, in the business of keeping that information, so they're trying to figure out how to address that issue so that they can provide that information to us. And our meeting was adjourned at 8:31 PM.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Underwood? Rules of public policy, met on February 24th. We presented a hard copy of the charter, which included the new language for Section 305, which came about from the Charter Review Commission and the approval of the citizens. There was some discussion about the wording of the revision, which then Mr. Mosby was going to be reviewing, some of our concerns with Mr. Dieters. We also discussed the codified ordinance 113.01. It's the posting places ordinance. We'll need to gather some additional information so we can consider repealing that ordinance, which officially is ordinance 20-1-1999, because it's outdated, but it's still on the books, and it does cause some confusion. The ordinance states particular places within the city that postings are supposed to happen. Some of that was cleared up with the revision to the charter. But it's also been noticed that there is a certification stamp put on pieces of legislation, and that stamp has places listed, addresses listed, that are not the same as the ordinance, and we're going to see about replacing that certification stamp once we get the ordinance squared away. I believe that's the only, that was the primary focus of the meeting, those two issues. So, we do hope to have an update to Section 305, when we get that cleared up, so that we can have hard copies available, at least a limited number of hard copies available, with the ability to make copies for citizens if they would like. I believe that's all I have for that report. Any questions for me? Ad hoc reports? Anyone? Nothing? All right. For the North College Hill Chamber of Commerce, some of the executive board members met February 25th at Kremers. There was some discussion about mailing additional invoices. We had emails that went out with invoices, but there were others that, some of those emails were returned, so we had to send out actual paper invoices. Most of the discussion was about the upcoming yard sale for the chamber, and there are continued updates to the website. There will be a general membership meeting on March 12th at 8:00 AM at Perkins. That's all I have for ad hoc reports. Anything else? Administrative reports. Madam Mayor.
Good evening. Excuse me, I just have a two, well, more than two, but Ms. Kate Green did resign from the planning commission as well. So, I did speak to one person, and she gave me a name of another who I'll be reaching out to. I'm sorry, I don't, I didn't write his name down in my notes. So, if you have any suggestions, if you could email me that, and also, we're still, the person who I asked for the recreation director for that commission does not have time to do it. So, I need two for planning, one for the recreation. We did, we have been doing some interviewing for our finance director. We have, we had one, and she backed out, so we're going to look for one other person to see if we can interview there, and then we'll make our decision after we do that final one. And I did talk to, I know Ms. Bailey had reached out to me to see who to talk to about Government Day, but actually, Mr. Spangler came to me, and he said if we would like, they could do April 20th this year. And I asked him, you know, if they didn't want to do it this year, do we want to do it next year? But he said the date that looks best for this year is April 20th, so either you can let me know if it's something that you want to do, or I sent you, Ms. Bailey, his information. Someone could reach out to him and let him know, so he can prepare the kids, I guess. At least, give him at least a month, so he can get them ready. So, that's all I have.
Mr. President.
Ms. Bailey.
I am totally down, so we'll be here anyways, Lee.
Well, Mr. President, sorry.
Mr. Milonovak.
I still haven't gotten that out of my system yet. So, I think if we're going to do it, we might, I know what was done in the past, we've used the senior center because a lot of parents have, have come and.
It was here last time.
Been here a few times.
Yeah, it's been here.
I don't remember.
Well, the last one I attended was at the senior center. I mean, that was years ago. You remember that?
I can, no.
Okay, so I'm not crazy that happened?
You're still crazy, but.
I'm crazy and it happened. Okay, well, that works. All right.
The last time, the few times that I was a part of one, it was here.
Okay.
So, twice there and once over here. And they came, and it wasn't a huge parent turnout, but.
Okay. Cool.
Mr. President.
Ms. DeWolff.
May I? It might be an opportune time for us to have it at the school. I know the mayor had suggested that we would have the inauguration at the school, and when we have things at the senior center, it's not really set up as convenient as this room or the school. So, I don't think the senior center would be a good spot. If it is, of course, I've got, or, I'm sorry, Ms. Underwood would need to find out if it's available. And so, if they, if you think there might be a large turnout, maybe we could just toss it over to the school and see if they would entertain it.
Mr. President.
Ms. Nichols, go ahead.
I don't think that it will be a big turnout. I think part of the idea is for them to come here to get the flow and the idea of how government works, instead of taking it to them. They come to us, and they sit in our seats, and I think that was initially, the idea in the past, at least.
Ms. Nichols? Kate Green, just to be clear, she was the professional that was on the committee, right? So, we have to have someone who's.
Professional, I'm sorry, yes.
A professional level, whatever that really was, but, okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Milonovak.
Isn't Dan Brooks currently on it?
Um, he is.
Doesn't he qualify as a professional?
I don't know.
Under the requirements, because he's an architect and does city planning?
That's what it, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I have to have so many members. I was trying to read up on it again for like the fifth time, just so I'm clear, and just to keep those numbers. I believe the one wasn't that I asked, I actually asked one of your neighbors, Ms. Davis, because she changed careers a little bit.
What is the profession that needs?
It's some sort of engineer or, or planning, or something like that. I'm thinking they just have to have like a engineering degree or something, isn't it?
Civil engineering, civil planning. I mean, that's the P in DAP, right? Civil planning, and then one of the As is architecture. I would think either or would qualify.
Four resident electors, one design professional.
Architect.
Yeah, I think a design professional is it.
That would be an architect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe it would be easiest.
It just says four, so. It says six members, four resident electors of the city, one design professional who may or not, may not be elector of the city, and who is not a member of any other commission. The city administrator, who shall be the ex-officio member, and the four resident electors and the design professional, who is not a member of any other commission, shall be appointed by the mayor. So, it only says one design, so.
Yeah.
I think Dan makes it.
Yeah.
So, I guess I just need two residents then. That's all I have.
All right, any other questions for Mayor Nichols? City administrator, Mr. Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I'll focus on one upcoming issue that has created some rumors in our city. Our Save-A-Lot will be closing in April. I've spoken directly with the property owner, and they have indeed confirmed that the building will no longer be a grocery store. Another retail outlet is scheduled to move into the building in May. The retailer understands that it must have the proper permits issued by the city prior to commencing business. I'd also like to share with you actually a wonderful experience that I had today. When I entered the building this morning, I had discovered a card addressed to me stuck in our door. Once I came in the office, I opened it up to find a very nice thank you card inside. Last week, we had a backup in our sewer drain, and in order to remove the blockage, we needed to access the small display room inside the Historical Society, which houses the Frish's replica. Public Works worked thoroughly and efficiently to find the problem, correct it, and then locate the proper cleanout locations in our building, which by the way, were, happened to be literally underneath the tiles that, that we have in the floor. They also cleaned up the display room and replaced all of the items. The Historical Society was so appreciative, they took the time to send us a thank you note. That kind of, that display of kindness deeply moved me and simply affirmed my conviction that North College Hill is a great place to live and work. I can only imagine how much more of an impact our city would have if we had taken the time to express gratitude toward others on a daily basis. I want to publicly thank the North College Hill Historical Society for their gesture of gratitude and express once again my deepest appreciation for their card. In addition, they actually gave a card, a gift card to Kremers, to the Public Works Department. This is the kind of relationship building that will continue to make our city great. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mosby? All right, we'll move on. Law Director's not here. Call of members.
Ms. Bailey.
Hmm, I don't have anything.
Mr. Hedger.
Thank you. I would like to just bring some attention to the upcoming community, Community Development and Recreation Committee. We will be covering a beauty salon district coming up, and I'd like to have as much input as possible from administration council and especially the public, and then also some new signage possibly, and then also a new dog park. And then lastly, that I'd like to point out, I'm proud to present from our committee, Resolution 3-2020, to actually, let's see, the city administration to review of the potential for our Parks and Recreation Department. I think that's something that's highly needed for our city, and I'm glad to present that to council, just to start the research into a Parks and Rec Department. And I think that's something that the mayor has wanted, and I know that lots of people on council have also voiced, so I'm excited to actually have the first reading tonight.
Ms. Underwood.
Thank you. This past Saturday, myself and Ms. Zorb and Ms. Hartman attended a training for newly-elected council members. The training was very informative. We learned a lot. However, because we weren't listed as participants, we didn't receive like emails which had some of the materials, and initially, we, we weren't even going to get like the hard copy book, which had some of the materials as well. It was somewhat embarrassing to, to kind of go and sign in and not be on the list. It just, to me, it just kind of made us look bad, especially since there were three of us present, and the woman who was kind of signing us in, she was very nice, she was very kind. She actually took, made the effort. She actually took, made the effort to try to find extra books to give us, but that did not include the emailed PowerPoint presentations from the presenters, which, you know, at the beginning of several of the pre-presentations, the person just kind of said, you know, well, I won't read my presentations. You guys can read it yourselves. And of course, we didn't have it, so there is that. And again, I'm going to remind everyone that I still think that we should probably figure out a way to put all of our meeting minutes in the same place, in the same format. Because during one of those trainings that we attended on Saturday, a law director who was there just kind of mentioned that we are required to keep those somewhere. So there we have it. I'm still harping about the meeting minutes. That's all.
Mr. Milonovak.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I just want to thank Mrs. DeWald for the meeting minutes. I don't know if I've gotten a chance to say it yet, but they've been looking really good and thanks for doing that. Good quality. Two thumbs. So I also want to thank everybody for attending the committee of the whole meeting to discuss the budget. Those are never easy conversations and I thought it was a very productive meeting. I thought we covered a lot of ground. Thought everybody was cooperative and I always learn something at those meetings, whether from the people up here or obviously from the finance director. It was very informative and I do appreciate that. Having said that, at some point in time, we do have the hangover responsibility to decide whether or not to repeal a certain ordinance in the past regarding the firefighter fund or to shift money around. And I think we really need maybe to discuss that in new business today or I don't know if that would be new business or old business. I'll leave it to the acting president of council to decide which slot to put that in. But the problem is I don't see how we can pass the budget without making, choosing door number one or door number two. We certainly, if we choose to try to shift money around, we have to give the finance director enough time to do that before it's due. And if we decide to repeal that ordinance that is causing the problem with the budget, we need to have three readings or be able to suspend them and we have very little time to do either thing. So we need to make that decision soon. That's it.
Ms. Zorb.
Did you forget my name? It's right here.
No, I saw that you were writing and I didn't want to have to make you do two things at one time. Thinking only of you.
I can handle it, thank you.
Oh, sorry. Ms. Zorb.
Thanks. So I just want to reiterate, we keep talking about the Planning Commission and then a citizen mentioned prior to the meeting that our website is, the calendar is messed up. I want to reiterate again from the OML training that we were in Saturday that even the Planning Commission, the CIC, all of those meetings must be posted on the calendar. Those have to be noticed just like this council meeting does. They all have to be out there where we are in violation. That's all I have.
Ms. Hartman.
Hello. All I really have is can we get our law director to come to our council meetings?
Yes.
Okay. That's it.
Mr. O'Shea.
Reminder for those who are interested and those who may be required, there is a Sunshine Law Training, March the 18th. And it might be considered Forest Park or Sharonville or Springdale or whatever that area is over off of Northland Boulevard. We talked about it earlier. I had a, I had a meeting with Chief Schrand and during that meeting, he brought out the Big Green Book, which is the book that generally holds a copy of all the codified ordinances, which obviously are available online, as we mentioned, through American Legal Publishing. But I asked him if his book was up to date and he didn't think it was, which then led me to wonder if there is an official copy of the Big Green Book anywhere. I know there used to be like a couple of those floating around different places. And I don't know if there is an official copy somewhere, multiple copies, which then leads me to ask, do we still get updates? Because I know usually annually, council would submit updates to Walter Drain, whoever that is now or was. And then at some point, once those are codified, I think we used to get those documents and then they would be put in a book or multiple books. So I'm just wondering, I don't know, I know Ms. DeWald, you're new in the position and Mr. Mosby, maybe you can chime in on some of this. Do we have those updates? Is there a book at least that has all the updates in it? Are we up to date?
Mr. Mosby. I mean, Mr. O'Shea.
That's me.
That guy. Or Milonovak, somebody over there. I'd like to answer first before, thank you, before Mr. Mosby does. I am well aware of the codified ordinances and the procedures. However, I have discussed with the last three clerks, where is that in the process and none of them know. So it's going to have to take me and hopefully anybody else on this council that wants to step in here some day evening to go through and find out there are Big Green Books. I'm not sure that they're updated. I know that in the past, these books were left out and available for anyone to look at. They're all locked up. So I would like to look into that issue about locking all this stuff up. And again, Ms. Underwood, I'd like to take on her campaign for a localized site. I do know, I spoke with a techie type person who says after five years, this stuff falls off on the internet and so that hard copies might be the best. So I don't know, I don't know what the answer is as far as keeping our minutes and stuff. There are volumes of books, envelopes of councils' reports, but not committee reports. And so back to the Big Green Books, yes, we have them. I have no idea what condition they're in or how often we get the codified ordinance to come in to replace them.
Mr. Mosby, are you aware?
Or when they've been replaced.
Are you aware, Mr. Mosby?
Yes, I'm, well, I'm aware that there have been ordinances in the past that would replace the codified ordinances that we currently have. And the only one that I was familiar with is the one that was in here, in this office. The Green Book. What I also understand is that Mr., that Mr., that Walter Drain would, would actually, when they bill us, they were supposed to send us a summary at some point. I haven't seen it yet. I haven't seen it come in the mail. I have talked to Mr. Dieters about it. So at this point, I have not actually had, and of course, as you all know, I haven't been in this position a year. So I haven't really seen a cycle where it's actually occurred. But it is something that we do need to look up so that we can make sure that our ordinances are current.
Ms. DeWald, in the bill that we received, was there just the bill, nothing else in there? Did you have a chance to actually open it?
I did open it and it is just a bill.
Okay.
So no other information.
Okay.
Mr. President.
I heard Ms. Bailey first.
I don't remember doing, getting one last year, but the year before last, they do mail them and they mail five copies. You can buy an entire book from Walter Drain and it's 80 bucks, but it would have everything in it passed from inception to date. So maybe if there's not a complete Big Green Book, we just buy one.
Start, start fresh?
Yeah, or I think Mr. Waller bought one, so somebody should hit him up for it.
Mr. Milonovak?
I think I might, I mean, are we currently, we're kind of going through like a website rebuild? Sort of, kind of?
I am in the process of, yes, developing an RFP for that.
I think when we get there, we might want to think of a devoted meeting minutes page. I mean, that's certainly where a lot of governments have gone now, where we're talking about having a singular place. A lot of governments have, I mean, you see them, like tons of governments are now posting their meeting minutes on their website and just have a donated page. And what we might want to do is to do that for the committees as well as council at large and our other commissions regarding, and what some other governments I've seen have done is any past like resolution or ordinance, they'll publish those with the meeting minutes on like the council. So they have, you know, let's say, what's the date today? March? March 2, right? So like March 2 agenda, March 2 meeting minutes, March 2 resolutions and ordinances passed. So three categories for each meeting. And that way it's all online and we don't have to worry about digging for it. And it's, if someone comes in and they want a printed copy, we can always print it right off of the website for a records request. And then it also helps because if people really want meeting minutes for a particular meeting, they don't even need to bug us. They can get online and they can print it out themselves. So I think that's really where we need to go when we talk about storing these meeting minutes.
I think all of them are available or most of them are available. I think the issue that Ms. Underwood has pointed out is the naming convention. You can't really, you don't really know where to look. They're there somewhere, but just really knowing what you're looking for, how the, you know, the name, et cetera. But Mr. Mosby, since technically still call of members, back when I had mentioned the Rules and Public Policy Meeting, I think you had spoke to Mr. Dieters a little bit about the wording for Section 305 in the charter. Do you have any update on that at this point?
Well, yeah, I can give you an update. We had two issues basically between that and I think it was Section 10.02. And so what I did was I went back and looked. I think I erroneously said that the language should mimic what is on the ballot. However, what's on the ballot is in the form of a question, which is why that had happened. I did submit or gave him a copy of the hard copy that you had given me. So basically what I learned is that the basic, the language that would be used in both 3.05 and I believe it's 10.02 would be the language that's in the resolution that was passed. So basically the result, the language in the resolution is basically an affirmative to say, to speak to the intent of what the amendment is supposed to say.
Having said that, do, do we have support from the law director to just enter that language directly from the resolution? Or is there, or are we expecting him, should we expect him to send us something and said, this is the wording that should replace 305 or something of that sort?
Yeah, I think that that would be up to council. I honestly, I guess I don't know what council's pleasure is on that. Are you looking for, do you want to give him a directive? Or are you looking for a recommendation for the language that would be put in the charter? Because that is a good point.
Yeah, the intent is to create a hard copy of the charter. And it's just a few, you know, overall, the document is complete except for the new change to 305 and then potentially cleaning up officially the 10.2, 10.02 so that the charter is a statement.
Correct.
An appropriate legal statement. So that's what, if there's, we just don't know the wording that we should officially put in there that would meet the legal requirements.
That's what I'm asking. So I guess to be, hopefully to be a little more clear. I was asking, are you looking for a recommendation from the law director? Or did you want to give the law director a directive to say, this is what it should say? No, I'm being very serious.
I understand, I guess it seems the same to me, but we need to know the proper wording to put in there.
Mr. President.
Mr. Milonovak.
I mean, I take that as we're looking for a directive from the law director. I understand what you're saying. It comes from the rest.
Giving a directive to the law director? That's the question. It's the same thing.
Right, basically, okay, so I'm sure, I'm very positive that council would want to make sure that we keep the spirit of it. And again, with 10.02, I think that we all kind of smiled, but unfortunately, they actually literally took the language that came off of the ballot and so therefore it's in the form of a question, which obviously it's not supposed to be in the form of a question. Having said that, I can, yes, I did speak to Mr. Dieters before, but I will tell him that we can, that you want a recommendation basically to, for what, how the, how the language should be worded in the charter. I'll just put it that way.
As long as we can adhere to any legal issues, since we have this charter, it's that legal document, we don't want to step outside the bounds.
Agreed.
All right, thanks, sir.
Mr. President.
Ms. Nichols?
I had a from earlier when you were talking about Walter Drain and the codified ordinances. There used to be a book in the administrative office. They would come in, as Ms. Bailey stated, and the clerk would take one. There should have been another book back here somewhere and there was one in the front office. The other ones were set back there, whoever took them. So you may want to check over here to see if there's one in administrative office still.
Yeah. I think like Ms. Bailey had mentioned, apparently there was five of them. And it might make sense that there'd be one there, maybe one here, the police, the fire. I'm not sure where the fifth one would have been, but it sounds like they have not been kept up to date.
I think only two were kept up to date. The other copies just sat in the back.
Okay. Remarks from the audience, Ms. DeWald, anyone signed in?
No one has signed in.
Would anyone like to speak tonight? I'll take that as, I'll take that as a no. We'll move on to legislation. Ms. DeWald.
First reading, Ordinance 1, 2020. An ordinance to authorize the city administrator to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the city of North College Hill and the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council.
Thank you, Ms. DeWald. I have some concerns about the Ordinance 1, 2020. We talked about them earlier. My first concern though is why are we using an ordinance for this? This issue has been brought up multiple times as recent as last May, when we talked about the full-time contract. Typically, all we're, really all we're doing is authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract and that's typically done by a resolution. So I was a little concerned to see this as an ordinance. Also, on February 5th, Mr. Dieters wrote in an email to me, "If you are suggest, suggestions that we draft legislation as resolutions, authorizing city administrator to enter into the contracts, I am in agreement that would work and be in compliance with the charter." So again, I just have some concerns that we're creating an ordinance for something that all we're trying to do is authorize the city administrator to execute the contract. Second, it sounds like unless the Finance Committee failed to report, they have not discussed the impact of this agreement. And really, all legislation should generally go to committee before coming to the council floor. So again, I was a little surprised to see this on the agenda tonight. And then as mentioned earlier, I know the council as a whole has not reviewed or discussed the agreement. Obviously, we could do it now or as permitted by law. And my recommendation would be to enter an executive session to discuss. We can either do that at the end of new business, maybe the next council meeting or during a special meeting. Those are my concerns about ordinance. Those are my concerns about Ordinance 1, 2020.
Mr. President?
Ms. Underwood?
I believe you asked if I had received an email with containing that agreement. And I looked through my emails. I promise, Ms. DeWalt, and I don't have one.
Mr. Hedger, you had questioned also.
I have it.
Okay. Ms. DeWalt, is, Ms. DeWalt, is it? I'm not sure of the timing. Maybe Ms. Underwood's email address isn't, wasn't included in the list or something? Do we know for sure? Because I know you had sent out copies via email of the contract.
Correct. When I send out copies, it goes to a group email address, and she should be included. I don't have the authority or the authorization to pull that list down to see who's included in there. So, if she's not receiving them, then my guess is she's not on that list.
Mr. President?
Ms. Zorb?
If Mr. Hedger knows where that email is, could you tell us the date? Because I don't recall seeing it either, to be frank.
It looks like I have it in my email on February 20th at 6:10 PM.
February 20th at 6:10, thank you. I'll look that way. I might nail it down better.
I also will forward it to everyone again.
Cool, thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. DeWalt?
See, if, February 20th, I'm sorry, Ms. DeWalt.
No, go, go ahead.
That looks like that's just the.
Go ahead.
That doesn't look like the, yeah, that's not the contract.
I thought it was attached in there, or, I actually thought it was one before that, but.
It is the one before that.
It's also attached at the bottom.
Mr. President?
Ms. Bailey?
I believe, I never.
Yep, I see it. My bad.
Okay.
So, 1,143 words?
Mr. President?
Ms. DeWalt?
So, I found the email. No, I didn't. I thought I had forwarded, Mr. Cropper had sent to me, but this is not the email. I had asked, I did not have a hard copy or an electronic copy when this first came out.
Right.
So, since then, I have received them. So, if, is anyone on council aware of me sending this? Because it's possible, then, that I didn't send it.
You did send it.
That February 20th email, the February 20th email.
Okay.
All of us, Ms. Hartman?
I got it.
Did you receive, all of us except Ms. Underwood did not receive that. It appears.
Okay.
So, Ms. DeWalt, will you do me a favor, please?
Yes, sir.
Make a note to contact the IT folks of some sort to verify that Ms. Underwood is on that particular group, so that we're making sure that all of council members are receiving the emails.
Thank you. I, I believe that I spoke with him about that, and he said he doesn't have the authority to look at that list either. But I'll be back up here Tuesday.
No, he. Excuse me. No, I do talk to him about that to make sure that it is updated. I do believe that all council members, the last update that we made was to add Mr. Graver, because he was the president and he wasn't a member of council, but I do, a voting member, excuse me. But I do know that the members of council have been included on that list. But he is in tomorrow, so we can, we can check it to make sure.
All right, thank you. So, back to the first reading of Ordinance 1, 2020. Any other thoughts from council?
Mr. President, I do have a question. It's something that you brought up, so I am asking for some clarification here. And perhaps it's a procedural issue, but you had mentioned that you were surprised to see it on the agenda. My understanding is that the, and again, this is just simply my understanding, but that a document that would be on the agenda would then, is supposed to be directed by the president to either be read and maintained on the agenda or directed to a particular committee. Now, is that something that has changed? Or is that not the proper procedure for how a document ought to be submitted to council?
It was my understanding that if it's on the agenda for first reading, then it's on the agenda for first reading. It's not, unless we change the agenda, obviously, and the president were to move, move it to a committee, it's, it's already being brought to the council floor. I would have expected it to be given to the chair of the committee for review in their committee, and then they would, of course, bring it to the council floor. It's somewhat procedural. To me, it's, it's, it's a minor concern. Again, this is only the first reading. That's why earlier on, I, I wasn't so concerned about removing it from the agenda. We can talk about it now. We can obviously move to refer it to a committee at this point, if we really felt necessary. We have different options. So, again, it was just an understanding, I believe, in the current rules of council, that all pieces of legislation were to go to committee before they were brought to the council floor. So, again, that's, that's kind of where my thoughts were coming from. Okay, so I, I don't think we can wait on making a decision on this first reading. I'm gonna, I'll move that we set a executive session for the next council meeting to discuss the collective bargaining.
Mr. President? I would also like to add to that. Another reason for executive session to discuss wages for the upcoming 2020 year for non-union employees.
I thought you were doing that in your Finance Committee.
But I don't want to. It's something that we can discuss in executive session, and I feel like there was so much contention last time from employees that we should discuss it in executive session this time, so there is no contention and people can speak freely.
Mr. President?
Mr. Milonovak?
I agree with everything you just said, but the, I think.
Me or her?
Both of you, actually. I, I think we should go into executive session next time to discuss the collective bargaining agreement. I certainly agree with that. And Ms. DeWalt, just so you know, I, I prepared. You want to make a look on the agenda, and I'll hand this to you, so you got it. And, sorry, but I also agree with Ms. Bailey, too. I don't, I think we can discuss the timing, but I certainly think that we should be discussing wages of employees and things like that in executive session, which we're allowed to do and probably should do.
Mr. Milonovak, it is to my understanding that we currently have an employee that is working outside of what we set for employees for this year, so, and the parameters.
Can we, so just one employee? Because then we just do wages at the end of last year, right? So, I mean, is it just a matter of discussing the wages of one employee?
That's why I prefer we're in executive session.
I mean, then I don't.
We're going to set the salaries of all employees, aren't we?
We probably should, yeah.
So, it's not just one employee.
We're a little behind.
Yeah, we are behind.
Okay. Well, I think the matter is whether or not we want to do that at the next meeting along with the collective bargaining agreement, or if we want to do it the following meeting, so we're not doing two executive sessions in the same night.
I'm going to pull rank in my temporary position. I would prefer that those motions be made separately. Some folks may want to do one and not the other. So, right now, there is a motion on the floor to add to the agenda for the next council meeting, executive session to discuss collective bargaining by myself, Mr. O'Shea. Do we have a second?
Mr. President?
Mr. Milonovak?
I second your motion.
All right, so we have a motion to add executive session to discuss collective bargaining to the next council meeting by Mr. O'Shea, a second by Mr. Milonovak. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Underwood?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hedger?
Yes.
Mr. Milonovak?
Yes.
Ms. Zorb?
Yes.
Ms. Hartman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Mr. President?
Mr. Milonovak?
Just for clarification, we're talking about doing that at the next meeting or tonight?
The next meeting, to put on the agenda for the next meeting. That will give everyone on council an opportunity to read it, and hopefully, we don't have to go through it at that level during that executive session.
Mr. President?
Mr. Milonovak? Mr. Milonovak, I apologize.
It's fine, either way. We should probably certainly remember to make a motion still to enter executive session next meeting.
Understood.
Mr. President?
Ms. Bailey?
I do feel as though our next meeting, we should also go into executive session to discuss salaries.
Are you making a motion?
I am making a motion, sorry.
I'm writing it down. Do we have a second for Ms. Bailey's motion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Hedger?
I'll second.
All right, so we officially have a motion to, from Ms. Bailey and a second from Mr. Hedger to include discussion of personnel salaries at the executive session at the next council meeting. Any discussion? I, I have some concerns that the amount of time that may be involved, though I'm not specifically against the, the addition, but I have some concerns that it may prolong the, the meeting that night.
Mr. President?
Mr. Milonovak?
I share that. And I was thinking, though, that doesn't mean I don't want to do it. Do we really need to do, let's say, committee reports at the next meeting? Is that something that we can cut out of the agenda in order to allow for more time to go into executive session to do business?
I would also. Mr. President?
Ms. Bailey?
I would also give up my slot for call of members and committee reports.
Ms. Zorb, I think I heard you.
You did. So, I, I certainly agree with the whole time thing, because the other thing we will more than likely be discussing, discussing at the next meeting is the budget. And that's going to take up a lot of time. I fear it will take up a lot of time.
Mr. President?
Ms. Bailey?
I think that in order to properly budget, we need to have this conversation. So, I am open to a Tuesday or a Wednesday of having a special executive session meeting to speak on this.
Mr. President?
Mr. Milonovak?
I, the only thing with special meetings is then the attendance gets to be a little bit wonky for different people's schedules. I, I personally think that we're, it might be a long meeting, and I, I agree with what everybody's saying here. It's going to obviously be a time issue, and we do need to talk about the budget. But I also agree with Amber that it, these things are all kind of like interrelated, so. And we do control the agenda. I mean, I, I was thinking cut out committee reports, but at the same point in time, if she's talking about cutting out call of members, I mean, we can maybe remove certain things from our agenda to focus on doing the business we need to do and get done in executive session, and also get focused on the budget in regular session.
Okay, I, I think we all understand the time constraints and issues. I'm not in favor of removing the items from the agenda. However, any of us obviously can limit what we have to say during those times to make the meeting move a little more quickly. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, please call the roll for adding the discussion of salaries, personnel salaries to the executive session.
At the next meeting.
At the next meeting, yes.
Subsection. I was waiting for Matt to say it.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hedger?
Yes.
Ms. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Milonovak?
All-nighter, baby. Count me in, yes.
Ms. Zorb?
No.
Ms. Hartman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
I believe we've talked about the first reading of Ordinance 1, 2020 for a while. Let's move on to the next piece of legislation, please.
Mr. President?
Shuffled my papers now, one moment.
All right, while we're waiting, Mr. Milonovak?
Real quick, I did, I wrote these down. I mean, just to help you out.
Thank you, Mr. Milonovak.
You're welcome.
We have a first reading tonight on Ordinance 2, 2020. An ordinance making appropriations for curtain, current expenses and other expenditures for the City of North College Hill, Ohio, for the period beginning January 1st, 2020, and ending December 31st, 2020.
Mr. President?
Ms. Bailey?
In an effort to save time, I would like to move first reading of Ordinance 2 to 2020, Ordinance 2 back into Finance Committee.
Mr. President?
Next week, and we can move it right back out.
Mr. President?
I guess officially, you're, it's a motion to refer to Finance?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President?
Mr. Hedger?
I would second it.
All right, we have a motion to refer the Ordinance 2-2020 to the Finance Committee by Ms. Bailey and a second by Mr. Hedger. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Zorb?
So, I would like to point out that we all met as a committee of the whole. All of us discussed the budget, and now you're referring it back to Finance, where there is a limited number of individuals, and not everyone would have input.
Mr. President?
Pointing out the obvious.
Mr. President?
Ms. Bailey?
If we want to continue on with this, we're going to have to amend it on the floor in quite a few places. From the Street Fund, not even bringing up ordinance from 2017. Like, there's still a lot of amendments, like prisoner onboarding.
You understand that there's already been a reading now?
Ms. Zorb?
I'm sorry.
We would have to amend it. I know we're going to have to amend it on the floor anyways. I understand that. However, there are some things that I think definitely need to be ran by the Finance Committee.
Ms. Zorb? Would you like to say something?
Better go on.
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Milonovak?
Mr. Mosby, doesn't this do at the end of this month?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And wouldn't the Finance Committee meeting be the fourth Monday of this month?
No, it's next Monday.
It's next Monday.
However, I mean, I would like to make a little clarification, just to be clear. You all are members of council. Even though you are not officially assigned to a committee, you're certainly welcome to provide input at every committee. If everyone showed up at the Finance Committee, that, that wouldn't be an issue. So, I, I mean, I'm, I, I don't know why someone would not be able to provide input.
Well, Mr. President?
Mr. Milonovak, go ahead.
Well, I think it's duplicative, I think, might be the issue. I mean, we talked about it as a committee of the whole. I mean, one option would be to, to alter the committee meeting on Monday to a committee of the whole for those who want to come. I mean, that's, that's another option to think about. I mean, that's kind of like splitting the baby, so to speak, right? I can't make it, but, I mean, if, you know, you guys want to do it, because I'm going to. to attend the school board meeting, it's my ad hoc, and, but, I mean, that would kind of split the baby. Would you rather do it that way, Ms. Zorb?
I think that makes more sense.
I do, too. For those who want to come and participate up here or not out there.
Mr. President?
Ms. Bailey, go ahead.
Not sure on this one. Can we refer a piece of legislation to committee of the whole?
It is a committee.
Well, Mr. President?
In theory, we could refer it to a new committee if we wanted to make up a committee, so that would be an option, but...
Okay.
Ms. Underwood?
First of all, I would like to say that, point out that that will be a great question for our law director. Second of all, I'm just wondering, with regard to ordinance two dash 2020, is that referring to the budget that, that we have been presented with without any amendments? Or, I'm just trying to understand what this first reading is referring to.
As it is not attached.
I have, yeah, I have some concerns also with this piece of legislation and the appropriations in general, which I was, I was prepared to discuss those issues at this meeting tonight, as stated so many, we were all involved in the committee of the whole and discussing this at, at a very detailed level. Now, to Ms. Underwood's point, there was an expectation that some of the things that were brought up during that committee of the whole meeting would have been addressed, and I have not seen an updated version. Mr. Mosby, are you aware of an updated version?
He made the changes, I believe, that next day, as Wednesday night was the
Right.
Discussion, so, right. The only, the only difference that you see, of course, is the, you know, you, you see the, the budget, of course, as we had discussed, it isn't the whole, it's not the whole thing, because obviously that would be a lot of paperwork, and so it is shown at the activity level, but that was really about it.
Okay, so, so, I don't believe anyone on council has a copy of that, those revisions as discussed at the committee of the whole meeting. Would all council agree with that?
Yes.
Yes.
So, there's definitely some concerns there, that it would be, it would be difficult to move forward without having that information. But again, I'm, I was, I was expecting to see that tonight, because potentially those revisions would have addressed some of my concerns that I have in here.
Mr. President?
Mr. Hedger?
I would also agree that there is a lot of concerns with the budget. There's, my biggest concern is the transfer out of the EMS fund, which is currently illegal and is against one of the past ordinances we passed in 2016, 17. And not only that, but if that's not allowed to happen, that creates us to actually have a negative carryover balance, which then is also another issue. So, at this point, I would agree to, Ms. Bailey, to send it back to a committee of the whole.
Mr. O'Shea?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Mosby, can you have Mr. Cropper send it, because he's leaving Friday, correct?
Correct.
Is there any way he can send it tomorrow? You said he's already made the changes?
Correct.
Okay, so...
That's what I just wrote down.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Miller-Novak?
To Mr. Hedger's point, I think I mentioned that in the call of members, that at the end of the day, there's not much Mr. Cropper can do until this council gives him clear guidance on how to handle the resolution, I'm sorry, the ordinance that you just mentioned, whether repealing that past ordinance to make the thing legal or giving him the direction to fix the budget, but the only thing I fear is he's going to be out of town for a while, so, it's something to think about. But either way, I mean, this, this ordinance, it's not going to work until council gives him that direction.
Okay, I know there was some discussion about whether we have just refer it to a finance committee or we refer it to a committee of the whole on the night of finance, and I am asking for some clarification on the reason why we need to officially make it a committee of the whole as opposed to just a finance committee. If you're not able to be there, then you're not going to make it to either, whether it's a finance committee meeting or a committee of the whole. It might, leaving it as a finance committee meeting then doesn't change, it doesn't change, there's no special meetings involved, and it can still be a little less formal in our, in our discussion. So, I would, I would personally prefer that we just leave it as a finance committee meeting.
Mr. President?
Mr. Miller-Novak?
All that aside, that's great. I mean, I really don't care either way, but regarding, you know, whether or not it's a finance committee or a, or a council committee of the whole, the problem I see is we might as well pull out our calendars and start scheduling special meetings for the rest of this month, because otherwise, unless you guys are going to part the sea next Monday and decide everything you're going to do and fix this thing and give Mr. Cropper a clear direction on how to proceed with the budget, if the one is to repeal the past ordinance, then you're going to need to draw up an ordinance to do that, and there needs to be either three readings or suspension of those readings, which require six of us to show up at said meeting next time. The other option would be to give Mr. Cropper the direction to redo the budget and keep the ordinance, which he's going to need time to do that, which is going to put us up against the wall in terms of the end of the month, so I don't see how possibly this is all going to happen between now and the last meeting in March and that we're going to be able to pull it off, so I think it's time to synchronize calendars and find two or three dates that we can have special meetings before the end of this month or this, so he's not going to have a budget.
Mr. President?
Ms. Underwood?
I agree with everything that Mr. Miller-Novak just stated, and I would also like to remind everyone that I believe that Mr. Cropper will be gone for two weeks, starting Friday, three weeks.
Be back on the 24th.
Two weeks, starting on Friday, so we, we haven't even met, we haven't even figured out, like, we, we don't even have the last changes that were requested, and then we have to try to figure out how to fix it, and I know it's due, so I agree with Mr. Miller-Novak. We just need to schedule the time now to try to get it done.
Mr. President?
Mr. Miller-Novak?
Well, if he's not coming back to the 24th, I mean, I hate to say it, but we might want to find three days, the week between the 23rd and the 27th, to meet, because if we give him the direction to adjust the budget, because you're not going to appeal the past ordinance, then presumably the soonest we would have a copy of that would be the 25th, 26th. Mr. Mosby, are we allowed to meet the 30th on the fifth Monday? Is it due the 31st, I thought? So, we could use the 30th as one date, correct?
Thought it was due on the 30th, no?
It's, if it's not done, if it's not in the county office on the 31st, that's what we were, that's, that would be the problem. In other words, we would not be, technically, we would not be able to function without a budget if it's not in there by close of business, March 31st.
Is it really, I'm sorry, Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Is it, is it reasonable for us to schedule a meeting on the 30th, knowing that the budget has to be in on the 31st, when we, you know, we're not getting what we expected, you know, already, like, we expected to have the amendments today, we didn't, we don't have them? I'm concerned that we meet on the 30th and we get it done, and it's still not turned in on the 31st.
Mr. President?
Let me, just a moment. Ms. Underwood, I think part of the issue with the multiple dates is we have to have the three separate readings.
Right.
So, everything would be complete, hopefully, before that, and that would just be a matter of making the, the approval of that, so I wouldn't be too concerned as far as that meeting on that 30th, but that would be, that would be my thoughts on that. Mr. Miller-Novak?
Yeah, that's essentially what I was going to say. I mean, the 30th would be like a firewall date. It's the fifth Monday, we might as well go ahead and tag it out, and then we might as well pick, the 23rd's our, our second meeting. Actually, no, the 16th is our second, second meeting, so, but being that Mr. Cropper's out, until the 24th, I mean, I'm thinking we probably want to peg like the 25th and 26th or something like that, and the 30th in that way. If we give him the marching orders to revise the budget, there's at least a fighting chance to have three reading dates before it's due.
Mr. President?
Ms. Bailey?
I would like to call the question of the original question first of moving it back into finance and then do scheduling.
Alright, does everyone agree to call the question? Roll call to call the question, please. This is just to call the question.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hedger?
Yes.
Ms. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Miller-Novak?
Yes.
Ms. Zorb? Ms. Hartman?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Shea?
Yes. Okay, we have a motion to refer the ordinance two dash 2020 to the finance committee by Ms. Bailey, a second by Mr. Hedger. Please call the roll.
I don't even know where I am in my notes anymore, so give me a moment here, please.
That's fine.
You are asking for a roll call on what, again, please?
The motion to refer to finance.
I'm going to have to watch this movie over and over again. Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hedger?
Yes.
Ms. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Miller-Novak?
Yes.
Ms. Zorb?
Sure.
Ms. Hartman?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Mr. President?
One moment, Ms. Bailey. I lost my notes, too, in all this excitement. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Bailey.
Christian, Mr. Hedger, would you like to give up your time?
Yes, I will give up the time for community recreation development, for extended discussion for the budget.
Mr. President, I will reschedule that during new business if you are cool.
That'll be fine. Okay. That's two. Alright, I believe that's all the discussion for the first reading of ordinance two dash 2020.
Mr. President?
Mr. Miller-Novak?
Well, maybe. But, I mean, I, I did at least introduce the idea of scheduling dates. I mean, I'm happy to do that in new business or something like that, whatever you want to do, you're, you're driving the car.
Yeah, we're going to move forward with legislation at this point, and we'll talk about that later.
Okay, thank you.
Continue, Ms. DeWolfe, with the legislation.
Thank you. First reading for resolution 03 2020, a resolution to authorize the city administrator to review the potential for a parks and recreation department.
Any discussion? Hate to be the one. I was concerned why we're using an actual piece of legislation for this, why can't we just do a motion, and if we need to, in writing, that just simply says something like, "Council authorizes city administrator to explore in detail the potential for the creation of Parks and Rec Department, and council expects to receive a report and recommendation within 90 days." Mr. Hedger, why did we go with the formality of a resolution?
I thought the formality would bring some weight to the discussion. It is such an important topic within North College Hill. I believe that having an official report from the administrator is something that council needs and the citizens need to have a complete and full understanding of where we are at with our Parks and Recreation Department. Not only that, but it also gives a strict timeline. It gives 90 days from the effective date of this resolution for the administration to present something to council.
Mr. President?
Mr. Miller-Novak, go ahead.
I, I don't see a problem with that. I mean, as much as we've got on our plate here in March with the budget, I mean, kicking the third reading out to April and giving the administration 90 days to do it?
I thought it'd be plenty of time.
After the budget would be?
Like it should be done.
Any other discussion on resolution three dash 2020? Ms. DeWolfe, continue.
First reading on resolution 04 2020, a resolution authorizing North College Hill City Schools to prepare and execute an application for Safe Routes to School, otherwise known as STRS, funds and submit to the State of Ohio Department of Transportation. First reading.
Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Thank you, Ms. Bailey, I didn't want to be the first, go ahead.
Has, not that I'm trying to refer anything, has this been discussed in committee resolution four, 2020?
Mr. President?
Or what is the origin of this?
I have not seen anything. Mr. Miller-Novak?
I was able to attend one of these committee meetings at the school board, and it's a pretty neat program, essentially the safe, unfortunately, it wasn't, because they were during the day, my workday, and it never works out too well, but the, the committee itself, the idea was that the resolutions, it's, it's a grant, and it gives money to the, the school to create safer routes for kids, and it can be anything from road signs to flashing lights for crosswalks and things like that, so it's 100% give, so any, any safety device that is recommended is ultimately, we don't have like a, a lot of Ohio grants have like a match, like, you got to pay 10,000 to get 10,000 or something like that, and there's very few strings attached, so it was actually a school committee that met a number of times and used the recommendations for the grant.
I don't see anything on here of who submitted this, where it came from, does anyone know?
Mr. President?
Ms. Bailey?
I do know that last year, we did do like the ODOT study and all the safer routes to schools background work, but I hadn't heard anything from then till now, so... I don't even remember what the projects were, so I'm just kind of...
Mr. President? Mosby, Ms. Mayor, can you address the issue for us, please?
Sure. The school is, of course, applicant for the grant that Mr. Miller-Novak was referring to. The necessity for this particular legislation is that it has to be a joint legislation according to ODOT, in other words, signed by both the LPA, which is the, our local, the local agency, plus the, the organization that is actually submitting the application. So, in this case, the school district is submitting the application for all intents and purposes through us, and so they, too, will be passing a, a resolution that will be the same as this, so that it will be a joint resolution that will be able to be put together with their package. There's also a letter of endorsement, for example, that the mayor will sign, that they'll be able to do that, and part of the, in order for them to be eligible for it, one of the things that they had to be able to say was that this particular piece of legislation is at least working its way through the process, which, which necessitated being able to put it on the agenda.
Alright, thank you. Do you know who created this document?
Who created the legislation? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the legislation is a template that comes from the Ohio Department of Transportation.
Okay, so, I guess, because one of the questions I had are the initials, safer route to school.
It isn't a mistake, just to be clear. It's STRS, that is.
Alright, thank you. And then, again, being a stickler for some of this stuff, it's a resolution four, but we, it's stated in here, now therefore be it ordained by the North College Hill City Council.
Correct. Because remember, I said it has to be joint?
Thought we resolve, but I thought we resolve resolutions and we ordain ordinances.
Say that again, I'm sorry. Let me go back, which, maybe I jumped?
So, the, the legislation is a resolution. So the, the legislation is a resolution.
Correct.
And usually, when you agree to a resolution, you, you say, "Therefore be it resolved by..."
Correct.
And, you know, whether...
You would be correct with that.
All right, thank you. And then, another concern I have, um, the last paragraph at the very bottom says that this resolution is an emergency.
Correct.
But yet, it is not, does not have the emergency clause in the title. So my concern is just as if this is a template from the state, there's some issues with the template that just confirmed.
Well, each, of course, each, obviously each locally municipality is going to have their own, um, you know, obviously their own way of doing it. So I can add, or we can amend it to make sure that the declaring an emergency is at the top. The reason for it down at the bottom, however, um, basically is to say that once it was passed, it would be considered an emergency. That's really for ODOT, when they would see that it would take effect by the time that they receive the application. But yes, I can, we can amend it to add, um, and declaring an emergency at the top.
Mr. President?
Mr. President?
Ms. Zorb?
So, along the emergency, um, line, but do we... This implies that there is a deadline to this. Is there a deadline, and do we know what that deadline is?
There is a, there is a deadline, and, and please forgive me, I don't remember the exact date right now, but there is a deadline, which is the very reason, again, that we, that we put it on the, um, that we put it on the agenda, so it would be in process. The actual resolution does not have to necessarily have been passed at the time of the submission. So if, for example, it is, um, before the end of this month, obviously if this goes through three readings, it would not be passed until April. So if the deadline to submit was before the end of the month, they could submit it and say that this is a resolution that's in, that's in process of being passed by the council.
Ms. Bailey?
Section 3, upon completion of... There's an "O" missing. This is why I, I understand that there are deadlines, and I understand that we need to move fast on stuff, but this is why I am an advocate for pieces of legislation to go into committee, so that way the committee can discuss those and clean those up quicker than being on a council floor voting on them.
It doesn't have to be, to be very, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
I wanna be clear, this does not have to be voted on right away, absolutely can go to committee. The key was that it has to be in process.
Mr. Mosby, Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mosby? If that were the case, that it doesn't have to be, that it would have to be in the process, could it not have gone to Public Safety or Rules and Laws in the last committee meeting? And that's still technically in process? I just feel as though, when we come in, sometimes we are blindsided with stuff like this, that should go to a committee. And if it has a deadline, it should still go to the committee, as there are various little amendments that need to be made. I think that by working hand in hand with committees and yourself referring legislation to the committee, not only can they stress the importance of deadlines and guidelines and the amendments during a council meeting much quicker and much faster, it also gives everybody a chance on that committee that they're interested in to understand what they're reading, to ask questions at that time instead of this time.
Well, again, just to be very clear, that's why I asked you, Mr. President, earlier, what is the process? If the process is that you all decide that these will all go to... Because basically, what I do is give them to the clerk of council, and because that way I'm not, quote unquote, really involved in how it gets on the agenda, that isn't my role. However, if you all would prefer, if somebody would prefer that I give it directly to the president, or if it comes from the mayor to the president, I am not certain about what process you would like... That's really the iss... That's really the only reason that I did it that way, because typically I thought that the president would, um, delegate it to a particular committee.
Okay, Mr. President?
Mr. Milonovak?
I, I, I don't, I mean, it, to me, it's all, who cares? It's, it's a piece of legislation. If it comes to council first, we can always, we're adults, we can always move to send it to a committee. If it goes to a committee first, uh, and we find out about it council, we can always move to put it on our own agenda. I mean, at the end of the day, this is a council meeting, and I understand that the administration's there. They're there for informative purposes, for us to ask questions. This is our meeting, this is our council. We have the power to vote, to do anything we want in this council, as long as it doesn't violate the rules and charter. If we want something to go to committee, we can motion to put it in committee. If we want something to come out of committee, we can motion to bring it out of committee. So, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how much time we're gonna spend talking about this crap, we got things to do.
Mr. President?
Ms. Underwood?
It doesn't appear to violate the rules that we haven't passed yet.
Yeah.
Actually, we, we did, we did continue those until changed.
Oh, okay.
So... Yeah, it's true.
But...
Jeez, let's go.
Okay, so... Are we, are we finished reading, with the first reading of Resolution 4? Would anyone like to make any motions concerning Resolution 4?
Just for clarification, Mr. President, is it going to be referred to a committee? That's...
At this point, no.
Okay.
Although, having said that...
Mr. President?
Ms. Bailey?
I'm gonna move to... Second your motion to amend this.
Uh, yes, I'll make a motion that we amend Resolution 4-2020 to include in the title "And Declaring an Emergency."
Did someone second yet?
Uh, we're not there yet, I'm not finished.
But I already seconded it.
Unofficially, Ms. Bailey seconded, but I hadn't started, yes. Uh, also to change, one, two, three, four, I guess it's the fourth paragraph that says "Now therefore be it ordained." Ordained should be changed to resolved. And in Section 3, as pointed out by Ms. Bailey, it says "Upon completion F." I believe that should be "Upon completion of" the described project. That is my motion for amendments. Do I now have an official second?
Mr. President?
Ms. Bailey?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Any additional discussion?
Just one thing.
Milonovak?
Technically speaking...
Mm-hmm, it's not in the body of the...
This sentence that says this resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency measure to take effect and being enforced immediately upon its passage to meet the Safe Routes to School application deadline, to be 100% super awesome. You probably wanna do a Section 5 and copy and paste that sentence and put it above the signature. It should be in the body of the, the resolution or ordinance, the actual emergency language.
Thank you, Mr. Milonovak. I'll amend my motion to include the creation of Section 5, which would include the, the emergency declaration, moving the paragraph at the bottom into Section 5.
Mr. President, I will still second that.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Uh, any other discussion?
Mr. President?
Ms. DeWolff?
For clarification, we have only, you are moving to change these things she seconded. We don't need...
That is correct.
To make individual...
That is correct.
Motion, okay, thank you.
We haven't voted yet.
Correct.
Call the question.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hedger?
Yes.
Ms. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Milonovak?
Yes.
Ms. Zorb?
Yes.
Ms. Hartman?
Yes.
Ms. Rocher?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And for clarification, uh, Mr. Mosby, will you... We don't know for sure, but we're making the assumption that you submitted this on behalf of someone to council?
Correct, I mean...
Will you, will you see that it gets made, it's changed, and we get a new one for the second reading?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Ms. DeWolff, continue with the legislation.
We have a third reading on Resolution 022020, resolution to certify assessments to the county auditor for placement on the tax duplicate.
Mr. President?
Ms. Bailey?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 22020.
Mr. President?
Ms. Zorb?
I'll second, but I'd also like discussion.
All right, we have a motion to adopt Resolution 2-2020 by Ms. Bailey, and a second by Ms. Zorb. Go ahead, Ms. Zorb.
Um, I seem to recall that at one point, we were told we were going to get another address to add to this, and I don't believe we've received that second address.
It isn't on there, that's correct.
So we're just going for it with the one?
We'll draft a subsequent legislation.
Awesome.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Mr. President?
Ms. DeWolff?
May I have that liberty to discuss? It doesn't change this ordinance.
Go ahead.
I can do it under new business, or not at all, and surprise everybody.
Surprise!
If it's not related to this question, then we'll, we'll go with, we'll roll call.
We'll do new business.
Call to vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Hedger?
Yes.
Ms. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. Milonovak?
Yes.
Ms. Zorb?
Yes.
Ms. Hartman?
Yes.
Ms. Rocher?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Ooh, that's a lot on there. Thank you, Ms. DeWolff. Are there any remarks from the audience as it pertains to all this lovely legislation?
No, sir.
All right, moving on. Any old business to discuss? There's nothing on the agenda, did we leave something out? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business.
Mr. President?
Mr. Milonovak?
Uh, I would like to discuss scheduling, far in advance, a couple of special meetings in the end of March.
Mr. President?
I will somewhat open the floor for open discussion, if we're playing nice. Go ahead, Ms. Bailey.
Tuesdays and Wednesdays? Um, I could do, you're probably better off to get me on a Friday afternoon rather than a Thursday.
Mr. President?
No, go ahead.
Oh, I forgot, we're doing open.
It's all right.
I, I mean, I highly recommend we try to figure out three dates after the 24th, because doing extra dates before Mr. Cropper returns just seems like why, right?
I'm unavailable the 24th on.
Oh, jeez. Well, as long as we get a quorum here, I think what we're gonna run into is that someone's gonna be unavailable on any date we pick.
I'm just letting you know that I...
Wednesday, the 25th is cool.
I can do the 30th, but 24th, 5th, 26th, 27th, no.
Let's do raise hands, 'cause let's go dates after the 24th. Who's available the 25th, which is a Wednesday? Who could do that? Do we have a quorum?
What's a Wednesday?
The 25th, March.
Oh, yeah, no, I can't do it, no.
One, two, three, four. We got four and a half.
Who's a half?
Me.
You're a half?
Yeah, Wednesday's very difficult for me.
Um, is there a time that would make it easier for you? Like 7:30, or...
No, no, early, like noon.
Okay, well...
Okay, cool, I mean, I could do that.
I mean...
Absolutely.
I cannot.
Wednesday that...
Not in the middle of the day.
Wednesday, we have a quorum.
Right now, we're talking about Wednesday the 25th.
Let's loosely pencil in a quorum on the 25th, right?
What time?
What about Thursday the 26th? Who could do Thursday the 26th? Anybody?
Did you say what time on the 25th?
Well, let's just consider seven.
Yeah, an evening meeting.
Anybody can do Thursday the 26th?
I can do evening.
Yeah, look at that, that's a healthy one, yeah. 26th is solid.
And I'm cool on the 30th, too.
Uh, who can do the 30th? I know we all talked about it.
That's a Monday, so we should all be available, most part.
So the 26th and the 30th are solid gold, right?
Can we, can we plan for the, the Thursday to start at roughly 7:15-ish? 'Cause I might be late for the Thursday, wouldn't it?
Is that the third Thursday of the month?
Probably the 4th, isn't it?
Probably the 4th.
It would probably be the 4th.
It's the 4th.
Since the Thursday, the 30th is the 5th, so...
That's correct, it's the 4th Thursday.
There's a good chance that we're just using these for readings, though, right?
Yes.
Yeah?
So this is hopefully a 10-minute meeting?
A 10-minute meeting, yes.
Okay.
I have no problem doing 7:30 on that Thursday. I mean, unless anybody else has a problem with that.
Is there any chance we found a day that we could get six people here and be done?
Sound like the 26th, Mike, but...
30th.
I know that's a crazy notion, but...
Well, how many people could do the 30th again?
The 30th doesn't really help, though, does it?
No, I...
No, it does, right?
Yeah, the 30th does.
It would, yes. I mean, in other words, you could do it all on the 30th, and then we would just have to submit it on the 31st.
Well, we have our next...
Let's not put all our eggs in the 30th basket.
No, let's not.
But just as a fell safe, we can all be here on the 30th.
Well, we should schedule for the 30th, yes, and we can cancel if necessary.
Two, weekend in there.
Yes.
Mr. President, what exactly are we scheduling? Are we scheduling just the readings, but not the budget discussion? I'm just trying to make sure I understand the plan. Special meetings just for the readings?
Well, I would not limit it.
We haven't got that down yet.
I mean, I think you might need to have discussion on there, discussion in, in the reading.
Two hours.
Just in case, yeah. So the thing is with a special meeting, you can only meet for what's on the notice, so...
So we, it would, it would be best if we at least declared it as a discussion. If necessary, we can discuss and then read.
What about Saturday the 28th, out of curiosity? Like on an afternoon weekend, is that...
If you guys are coming to me, absolutely.
Where are you?
Wilmington.
I cannot...
Well, we're not, I mean...
But it's a flea market, so you could shop and have fun at the same time, like...
We're not gonna have a council meeting at Head Shop at a flea market. Who can do the 28th on Saturday?
Uh, I should be available on the 28th.
What time, like?
Well, what time's good for everyone?
I mean, we can figure that out.
I'm open all day, generally speaking.
One, two...
2 o'clock?
I feel like there's something going on that morning, so maybe 2, yeah, 2 o'clock might be okay.
2 o'clock, the 28th. I can do 2 o'clock the 28th. You can do it.
Two, three, four.
Yep.
No. Nada. Okay, well, that's four people. That's a quorum. I mean, I'd rather have too many and not end up doing them than not have enough planned out personally. So, it looks like the 25th, 26th, the 28th, and the 30th, so there's four dates. Hopefully, we don't need them all, but maybe we should book them anyway.
Well, I guess, Mr. Miller-Novak, the part of the issue then is we really don't have to post or declare anything until 24 hours.
Yeah.
Right, so we even have some time to finalize these dates up until, I don't know, the 23rd or something, if it was really.
But maybe everybody blocks them off in their calendar that can do them.
Agree, agree, that's.
So, for the weeknight ones, I mean, do we want to just do like normal time, 7 o'clock, and then Saturday on the 28th, 2:00 p.m.?
I believe Thursday the 26th, we said 7:30.
Yeah, 7:30.
7:30 on Thursday?
Yes.
And then 7 on Wednesday?
Yes.
I'm cool anytime Wednesday, so.
Consolidate all of that information for me, please.
Sure.
That'd be marvelous.
Sure.
How do you want me to do that, just like an email?
No, just tell me Thursday.
You ready?
But hold on, though, let's.
Speak slowly.
So, the intent would be, we're meeting Monday. I guess we haven't officially set that up, the, right? Monday, we're planning on doing the Finance Committee and?
Monday's the easy one, so Monday, we're meeting at 6:30 for Finance rather than 7:30. Christian's giving up his time.
That's where I was headed.
Right.
Okay.
So, it's still a special meeting.
We're in new business, like.
Yeah, but we're not there yet, but I'm just trying to understand. So, Monday, we're going to discuss the budget and Finance.
Mm-hmm. And the ordinance holding us back.
And the ordinance, yes.
And.
But then after that, the only other meetings would be those coming up on the 25th that we're talking about now.
The 23rd, if it moves out, so if it moves out of Finance on Monday, the 23rd is our next regular council meeting.
16th.
Oh, 16th, sorry. I'm a page ahead. Then the 16th is our next regular council meeting.
And the issue, though, is Mr. Cropper will not be here after what day?
Oh, he's, so he's gone from this Friday, which is the 6th, to the 20, he'll return on the 24th. He will be in the office on the 24th.
About 6 to 20.
So, then he doesn't get travel banned.
Yeah, and, you know, just as another point, too, I guess, as you all were asking, I would like just counsel to remember that because you did read it technically into today's committee, that is one reading. So, it's not as if to say that you need three readings. At this particular point, you need simply two more.
Potentially, on the 16th would be our second reading, even if we needed to address some changes on council floor or take it to another committee, et cetera, we would have that ability. And then any of these dates at the end, we would only need one of them potentially for the third reading.
Right, but, Mr. President, we, we might run into the scenario where counsel decides to direct the drafting of a, like an ordinance repealing the past ordinance, which would start, like if they, they choose that door number two, right, that would have to that.
That would be a whole nother piece of legislation. That would be, require three readings.
So, that's why I want to schedule the dates because there's at least one door here that would require three additional readings.
So, yep.
Okay, so we, it sounds like then, Mr. Miller-Novak, if you want to reiterate the dates and times that it seems like everyone is agreeable to?
Okay, first was Wednesday, March 25th. At 7:00 p.m. Kind of watching Ms. DeWalt's writing hand here.
I'm caught up now. Go ahead.
Did you get that?
I did, thank you.
Okay. And then the second was Thursday, March 26th. At 7:30 p.m. The third date was Saturday, March 28th. At 2:00 p.m. And finally, is Monday, March 30th. At 7:00 p.m.
We are, Mr. Miller-Novak, to be clear, we are not posting any of these meetings officially at this time.
I, I think, I think that it was just, the idea here was for everybody to block it off in their calendar, so everybody doesn't make plans if we need them. And then probably the 16th is after the Finance Committee meeting next Monday, we come back on the 16th, we'll probably have a very good idea whether or not we'll need some or all of these dates.
Agreed. Ms. DeWalt, you understand that?
Yes, thank you.
There's not a lot of extra work at this time for you.
Absolutely. Oh, just getting this meeting on paper is going to be extra work.
Understood.
She's going to hand us a novel.
Okay, I believe, Ms. Bailey, we needed to do something with, officially with the Finance and/or City Community Development and Rec meetings.
Yes, sir. It won't be a regularly scheduled Finance meeting. It will be a special Finance meeting. We need to throw up a notice on our website.
Okay.
If you guys want me to notice your homes, please let me know. If this is plenty of notice and you don't want me to notice your homes, please also let me know.
And the reason it's special is because we're changing the time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, 6:30.
Yes, sir.
And that's on the 9th.
Yes, ma'am. In which case, all members of the council are definitely invited to attend.
And encouraged.
And we'll have ample time to provide feedback.
And, Mr. Hedger, for the record, you are relinquishing your meeting on that day?
Yes.
Mr. Hedger, if you decide to schedule a replacement meeting, let me know and I'll be there. And thank you for giving me your time.
No problem.
Any additional new business to add to tonight's agenda?
Mr. President.
Ms. DeWalt, you had something earlier.
I'm still finding that hard line of what to follow is clerk versus council. I wanted to bring up the March 18th that I was so dutifully appointed to, and I have, Ms. Underwood, I have her signed up. This is the Sunshine Law class. Is there anyone else that wants to be signed up for that?
Mrs. DeWalt, I'm also going to take that.
All right.
And then.
Ms. Bailey, have you already signed up, though, personally?
For the Sunshine? Mm-mm.
Okay. I'm already signed up, so that's.
So, you're already going?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Can you sign up as a group like that? I don't.
Well, on the application that I had, it only gave room for one additional person on there. So, did you receive an email?
I did not, but I can go online and sign up.
I can forward you that email so that you can go ahead and sign up for it, then.
Okay. Mr. Rocha, some of those organizations prefer us to sign up as a collective group because then they give us discounts on.
Empower you is by donation.
Yeah, I believe this is free.
Yeah.
But like, if we get, if you get any communication for another parliamentary one, will you let me know? Because I do want to do that one again.
Definitely.
That one's fun.
Me, too.
Yeah, that one's a good one.
I like that one.
Yeah.
And, Ms. DeWalt, for the record, you are not required to go to that particular training session. All we do is appoint you as the representative for the Records Keeping Act.
Understood, thank you. But I did not have anything to do that.
Well, that's great.
Yes, pardon me.
Well, we'll all officially be covered by your attendance. Thank you.
Two other topics I wanted to bring up, and one should, actually, Sunshine should have been under Old Business, but. So, I wanted to go back to the proper protocol for putting information on the agenda. I am going to take full responsibility for what you see on the agenda. When it's sent to me, I just put it on the agenda. I know that in the past, pardon me, it would, it was supposed to be directed to the President of Council, and then he would disseminate it to whichever committee should have that. Is that the procedure, the protocol, that I should follow?
It's in council rules. It is in our council rules.
Yeah, I think.
Do you have the council rules there, Ms. Underwood?
Mr. President.
Pursuant to 7.7, council agenda, the clerk of council shall prepare an agenda for each meeting. The clerk of council shall email the agenda and supporting documents to members, mayor, and city administrator by Thursday at 9:00 p.m. prior to meeting on Monday. All legislation and agenda items must be sent to the clerk by Wednesday at 10:00 p.m. in order to be on the agenda for the following Monday.
So, there's no additional information about, I thought there was something in there about?
About the clerk of council will post the agenda on the city website and supply copies near council chambers. The clerk of council will distribute agenda to members prior to meeting and make available to the public and attendance.
Yeah, I thought there was something that the president received some information and then would disseminate that. Go ahead, Mr. Hedger.
7.9, assignment of agenda items. The proceeding officer shall assign all legislative matters to the appropriate committee for consideration prior to introduction to the council agenda.
Would you repeat that? I really didn't hear a word you said.
The proceeding officer shall assign the legislation matters to the appropriate committee for consideration prior to introduction to the council agenda.
Okay.
Mr. President.
So, I think the key to what Mr. Hedger's saying is it's in the council, current council rules in 7.9.
I did write that down.
Okay, Ms. Bailey, go ahead.
And it really touches on it on 7.5.
Let's go back to 7.5.
Assuming that we're all on the same version.
The third and final item that I have.
Go ahead.
And if I'm overstepping my bounds, you can tell me to shut up when I'm done. So, in the past, and I don't know how it got started, we have the tax duplicate, which means fees that we're charging for high grass and maintenance to properties. In the past, this used to be listed as assessing cost of the removal of high grass and weeds and declaring an emergency. Is there any reason we can't go back to that rather than this long list of words we have that ends with tax duplicate that, and this is more clear and concise of what the legislation represents?
That would be a good question for our law director.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Underwood.
Understood.
Ms. DeWalt.
I sent an email to him.
We, as you're aware, the council officially, we are not the, we do not address the legal concerns. So, we, the expectation would, would have been, or at least maybe it's just my expectation, is that once all legislation is created, it is sent to the law director for review, and then the law director would give it a thumbs up or thumbs down, and we would move forward from there, but.
Okay. I will.
I have.
Understood.
It can really say anything, as far as I'm concerned, as long as it's legal, for the most part, I, I don't know, it's.
Refer to the law. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And again, I think, though we have rules of council, which we should adhere to, to the best of our abilities, I think, as Mr. Miller-Novak pointed out, I mentioned earlier to, when something's on the agenda, especially for a first reading, even a second reading, there's no reason why a member of council can't move to refer it to a committee. So, it, it does one thing, Mr. Mosby mentioned, that the first reading of this ordinance for the appropriations has been completed at this point, which is a good thing, in a sense, because at least that part's done. We only need two more readings, and it can be referred to a committee and discussed further. So, I don't, again, I'm obviously, as you may have heard, I'm a big fan of following the rules to the best of our ability, but sometimes I think it may be best just to recognize we have other options and try to use those options that are available to us, so. Any additional new business?
Mr. President.
Mr. Hedger.
I would just like to, I've heard that there's, you have the updated charter from your committee. Could you please send me an electronic copy of that?
Mr. Hedger, the, we were on hold with that until we got some clarification on revising Section 305.
Yeah.